The City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting, Monday, January 23rd, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Roll call vote, or, excuse me, roll call, please?
Commissioner Nelson.
Present.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Glasscock.
Here.
Commissioner Kling.
Present.
Vice Chairman Garrison.
Present.
And Chairwoman Mastin.
Present, thank you very much. First order of business is to approve the minutes from our last meeting held on Monday, December 19th, 2022. Do any of the commissioners have any corrections or additions? All right, that's a no. Will someone make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimously carried. Our next order of business is the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. Does anyone have any nominations?
Keep it copacetic.
All right, okay. Okay, so that's a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, we need more formal motions.
All right, thank you. I was like, well, that's not how I expected that to go at all. All right, would anyone like to make a formal motion for Vice Chair, please?
I would like to keep it just the way it is for Vice Chair.
All right, so Vice Chair Randy Garrison, is that okay with you?
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'll second that. Motion for Chair?
I would like to make a formal motion for Ms. Mastin to keep the Chair.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. All in fa-
Are you okay with it?
Yes, I am. I guess, I mean, what am I gonna do? Yes, I'm okay with that. Honored, thank you very much. Is it okay if I do unanimously carried? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimously carried. All right, we are going to skip Matter D because of the weather. We are missing the City Attorney and the Mayor tonight because they're held up. So we are going to handle that next meeting. And our next order of business is informational reports and updates. So I'll hand it off to Mr. Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Can I continue with that? Our next meeting will be February 27th because of the holiday on the third Monday. Unfortunately, I found out today that we will be kicked out of this location for that meeting, so probably the rec center.
Okay.
We are looking to have a special meeting at 5:00 to get through Item D that would have been here tonight, as well as potential project, and do our regular meeting at 6:00 for general plan. So that's what we're looking at right now. Hopefully, that works for everybody to start that at 5:00 on the 27th. Of course, we'll send you out more information in the next couple of weeks when that gets closer. If you didn't hear, one of the projects was supposed to go to council earlier this month, has been delayed to February 7th, so still no resolution on that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Now, the next order is called to the public. Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on any item that's not on our agenda this evening? If you'd like to speak, you must fill out one of the forms located in the back by the door. Speakers will be granted three minutes each. Do we have any takers? All right, no one has come forward, so we're going to move on. We do not have any old business tonight, so we're going straight into new business. Our first agenda item this evening is Design Review 22-013, a request for design review for a storage facility and office/warehouse facility.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. I'm Tina Hayden for Community Development, and I have the applicant's proposal for the Design Review Project Columbia Storage. The project details, the project site is about 13.3 acres. It is zoned I-1, light industrial, and it is a two-phased project. The first phase has two elements. There is items within the gated area and items outside of the gated area. Within the gated area, there is one climate-controlled storage facility with a front office. There are three RV boat storage canopies, one members lounge for the renters of those covered storage sites, one RV, one uncovered RV boat storage site, and then six drive-up self-storage buildings. Outside of the gated area, there is one warehouse/office building with 12 rental spaces for independent business owners. In Phase Two, within the gated area, there is five drive-up self-storage buildings. Here is the zoning map for the project site. To the north and the south, we do have a similar I-1 zoning. There is a strip of commercial zoning here, and then right along this line here is the city limits with Clarkdale, single-family residential throughout here on the west side. Here's the site plan. Right here is the northern extension of North Alamos. Here is the proposed access road from North Alamos to East 89A. At this time, ADOT has not approved a permit for this project. If they do not approve anything, one of the stipulations does require that the applicant will have a revised code review and design review submission. This is the gated or fenced-in area. The two little arrows here and here are the gate access to the site. These are the drive-up self-storage buildings here. These first six ones are what's proposed in Phase One. These five here are what's proposed in Phase Two. Then we have the RV and boat storage. Here is the uncovered site for the RV and boat storage, and this is the canopy area. Right here is that members-only lounge for the people who rent in this area here. This is the climate-controlled self-storage building with the administrative offices. And this is the warehouse/office site with those 12 rental buildings or units. This is the updated landscape. In the staff report, I had mentioned that the applicant had, did not have the required amount of trees or shrubs. This landscape plan was presented to me today. I did review it. It does show that it is meeting the requirements of our zoning ordinance for the trees and the shrubs. Right here, this is the western portion that borders Clarkdale. This would be the northernmost point, going down to this southern point here. This is the eastern area running along North Alamos here. This is your northernmost point, going down to your southernmost point. This is the materials page. I actually do have something that can be passed around. And then we'll get into the renderings and elevations. This is the climate-controlled storage facility here. Here are the elevations of that building. This is the rendering for the warehouse/office space. And there's the elevations for that building. Then I have elevations for the member lounge building that is adjacent to that covered RV and boat storage. Elevations for the drive-up self-storage units, one through six. And then on to the site evaluation. This is looking north on North Alamos Drive. Right here is where the road improvements will be, and they will be dedicated right-of-way to the city here. This is looking south on North Alamos Drive. This is one of the properties to the southwest and the other business property to the south. There are 11 stipulations. We did add one on due to a parking reduction request that was provided by the applicant. At this time, the director has decided to approve the reduction. Originally, it was required that 56 parking spaces would be used. We are allowing 28 parking spaces for the site due to the unique nature of a drive-up self-storage building. The first four stipulations here is that the project will be developed in conformance with what's been submitted to tonight's meeting. The project shall conform to Code Review Board comments. Dedicated rights-of-way shall be granted for the North Alamos Drive and, if applicable, for the access road from Alamos to 89A. If ADOT does not grant that approval, then a revision for code review and design review will be required. Stipulations five through eight. Number five is the parking requirements. Since they are meeting those, this has been taken care of. We'll have exterior lighting that applies with Section 408, landscaping that is in accordance with Section 407, and separate permits are required for any signs. Stipulations nine through 11, addressing and street names will be coordinated with Cottonwood Fire and Medical Department. Building permit applications must be submitted within 24 months of approvals. And the 11th stipulation that's not included in the staff report, a shared parking agreement shall be required for the development prior to the issuance of building permits. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm ready for any questions. Applicants are here for any questions that you may have for them.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the city staff?
Hi, Tina. How are you?
Good, and you?
Good, thank you. The ADOT component, excuse me, the ADOT component is, that's driven from an access from the 89A, correct?
That's correct.
And this is, this is something that the developer is requesting, or is this something that the city is requesting?
The developer has proposed it. The city is requiring that we have ADOT approval.
That makes sense from the right-of-way, and I guess I'll pull my question into the applicant.
Okay. Further questions? Go ahead.
So I'll go back to that question. So are you saying that if they do not get ADOT approval for the D cell and access, then you'll make them come back to this board?
For a revision, yes.
Because they'll have to pick-
For a revision or for, so?
The site plan will be revised, so it's something that will need, be required to come before you to approve.
Please silence your phones.
So I guess I have a problem with that, is, because I don't believe this much impact should happen in a location that doesn't have dual access. And so if ADOT was not to approve the right-of-way entrance, then I would have a hard time approving the development of this property in this manner. So what you're telling me is that all they would come back for is a revision of the agreement to allow them to proceed with the development once they have been turned down by ADOT, instead of saying it comes back to this board for an approval?
It would be approval of the updated site plan.
To clarify, you're saying it would come back for design review?
Right.
Yeah.
Just design review, not approval?
Correct, design review.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, that would essentially be their approval by this commission, is design review. That does include the site plan, the layout, the circulation. They would have to basically start over again with code review-
Okay.
-before they get back to this commission.
Okay, thank you. That answers that question, thank you. The other I have is, could you explain the shared parking agreement once again? Because I didn't quite understand exactly what you're getting after with this 11th stipulation.
There's actually two elements to this. The first is that the applicant wants to have a lot split of the, I would say, the northeast corner of the property. Actually, let me go back here.
Yeah, please do.
Definitely. So this right here, they eventually want to split and have a separate parcel aside from all of this.
Okay.
All of the parking is along here. That is why we would require the shared parking agreement, especially since our zoning ordinance requires 56 parking spaces. But because this is drive-up self-storage here, we're reducing that by 28 spaces.
Okay, that makes sense. And my last question is, when the board was being passed around, I noticed that the roofing is flat black or a matte black. And I'm going through the airport commissioner, what would you call him, the airport manager's comments, and he doesn't comment about the massive amount of roof that's going to be in the structure being right under the flight path? And I'm just curious if he even noticed that? Because it seems to me that the black would be highly reflective and would be a problem for the airplanes, but, so that's why I went through and I tried to read through his notes again, and there was absolutely no comment in them whatsoever on the roofing. So I'm wondering if you, if that came up in your meeting with them?
To my knowledge, it did not come up.
I can actually speak to this a little bit. The matte black is actually one of the least reflective standing seam roofs because it is going to absorb the light, like, because black by its nature absorbs light, and then the matte keeps it from shining off. There will be some reflection, and I'm not an airplane expert, but it won't be to the degree of a standing seam roof made out of another material.
Perfect, thank you. That was all my questions, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Tina. We'd love to speak to the applicant. Please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm John O'Connell, and I'm with Columbia Storage Group.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? I feel there's a high likelihood that we do.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson.
Thanks for coming in tonight, appreciate it. I understand why you would want an access from 89A. It makes a lot of sense. Are you anticipating issues with ADOT, or is just, they're taking a little longer than we do?
We really, we want the access point. We own the other properties on both sides of the access point, and so far, ADOT has been cooperative, and they, it's almost in the exact middle between the two roundabouts, so it's a good spot, but it wasn't, you know, it's not a given that we're going to have that deceleration lane and access approved. So, I mean, we don't anticipate any problems, but ADOT's, you know, took like four months to get even the application accepted and turned over to a planner, so it could be a long time.
What do you think that time might be? Would they give you any kind of idea of schedule for that?
No, no. And it's, one of the things we were going to request is that stipulation for be removed, just the city engineer, and I believe the city is, doesn't require additional access to 89A. So, I mean, we, it's going to be great for our other properties up there, but, you know, we should be able to access from this site, and so we didn't feel like it should be a condition to go back to design review if, you know, for some reason, ADOT doesn't eventually, you know, give us that access.
Do we have any, is there a liaison with the city that talks to ADOT? Or these kind of things to help get the process moving maybe a little quicker?
It's usually our city engineer, Public Works.
Okay, thank you. Any green energy components to the project? Any solar, anything like that?
We're looking at solar, but not, we haven't decided on it for sure, for the, it'd be on top of the RV, covered RV storage.
And that was going to be my point, you have a set of canopies that are just perfect platforms for that sort of thing. In my few months that I've been here, I haven't seen too much of that, and I'm surprised, being in Arizona, northern Arizona, the Valley of the Sun, that we're not, we're not trying to get into that a little bit more, but just for thought. And then finally, the members lounge building, interesting. What's that all about?
Well, what it is, is when somebody is, you know, you might have an RV storage and a storage unit, and when you're getting your RV set up or coming home and cleaning it out, there's, it'd be a great place for the kids to go. There's, you know, it's like an open room, TVs, bathrooms, vending machines, that type of thing. Pretty simple, but a place to get out of the sun and just, you know.
Yeah, I know, it's a great idea. Where I store mine, they don't have one of those, so, thank you very much.
Further questions from the commission? I have a question. Have you researched pervious paving at all for any of the public parking areas? I realize it's not suitable for any areas that are actually going to have RV traffic because of the weight, but we often end up having conversations on this commission about water. And one of the nice things about pervious paving, which I do not believe it's a problem on this property, but I try to look 10 years ahead, and I assume that we're going to be building things around this, and it just might be something to think about, especially after Commissioner Nelson asked about sustainability practices. So has there been any research into that, or?
And it was the impervious, the research, the impervious area?
Yeah, so just to let some water get back into the soil, because this is a large paved site. So it might be nice if some of the water could get back into the soil at slow speeds.
Yeah, we could, Luke could probably speak to that, but, I mean, we have to detain on-site all of our post-development flow, so we have detention set up. We have underground detention basins, and then everything flows out. There's actually a bottom part, it flows out under ADOT, and there's already a culvert there.
Yeah. I realize I'm coming at you probably blind, but we've had a few conversations about other projects that have nothing to do with you, but one of the things that happens with those culverts is sometimes they get clogged. And so we're just trying to be proactive about that and get our, the developers that we work with to maybe think about it, things to do in concert with that.
Yeah.
Hello, please introduce yourself for the record.
Luke Sefton, Sefton Engineering, engineering on the project. I'm aware of those other projects very well, so I've been looking at that, some of the problems that have been going on there. And I've been thinking about that as we come up with the detention and how to make it less perceptive, you know, for the public, because I think a lot of it's just perception. But, yeah, we're looking at a, we might take the RV spaces up there and try to make those gravel so that we can soak in some water, is one of the things. And I'm taking into consideration those other projects and what's happening to make sure that we do get some type of soak-in and it's not running on to the other properties, so.
Thank you very much. That's really good to hear.
And ADOT is, they're just not responsive. I just want to, they're not very responsive. They're extremely busy, like everybody else. I think, I don't, we have had two rounds of reviews-
With ADOT?
With ADOT, and they've been positive each time, but again, it's just taking that time. They've moved it on to their planner to look at and trying to get that. It makes me kind of nervous to have a project depending on ADOT or another, but ideally, we would love to have that through there.
All right, thank you very much. All right, do we, last chance for questions?
I don't have questions, but I think the gravel idea is a good idea.
All right, thank you very much. And is anyone here from the public who would like to speak for this project?
I would like to speak.
Yes, please, please drop your form off with me. Thank you very much, sir. And introduce yourself for the record at the mic.
My name is John Harmon. I'm a resident adjacent to this property. A few other residents are here with me tonight. First of all, I'd like to say that for all of the possible uses for this property, we are just tickled to death with this particular project. We think from our point of view and how it would impact our views and our quality of life, this project is probably the best project that we could expect to be developed on this property. There are some challenges that we see with the particular plan that was presented for landscaping, because much of the landscaping was proposed to pretty much screen the site from us. The problem with that is that the landscaping is so tall, it screens us from our view over the top of this project to the red rocks, the moguian ramp, the mountains on the other side of the valley. Our impetus would be to keep the screening to at the level of the screening wall, no taller than that. The site is basically lower than we are, so because of that, we have a sightline over the top of the project. Some of the advantages of this particular project is all of the buildings are one-story. They don't stick up into our line of sight that much. I understand that there is to be grading on the property on probably our end because there's two washes back there that kind of protrude into this particular property and that they're going to have to grade the property and level it to the sides of the property in order to have these buildings become level, because otherwise, they would be off the slope. I was curious what the level of grading would be on the property. From our point of view, the deeper you go, the better we like it. So I'm not sure if anybody knows the answer to that particular question, but the other is, there is a blow-off valve that I mentioned to you on the property. When Chairman Garrison owned the water company before, they built, on our street, was a dead-end line, a dead-end pipeline, and there's a blow-off on that pipeline that goes through my property into this property, and it protrudes into this property by about four and a half feet. I contacted Clarkdale Water Department, and they had no knowledge of it, but they're going to be working. I haven't heard back from them, what their proposal is to remove it or whatever. I just don't want them digging up my whole yard- or whatever. I just don't want them digging up my whole yard to pull up that blow-up valve. It was kind of a strange situation, uh, the way it was installed, but it was kind of neat to watch whenever the water department came around and put a bent tube on that end of that and blew water into the sky out of that. So uh, that's basically my questions. I don't, I I uh, we do like the project as far as it's proposed currently.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to address those questions if they want to.
Yeah, we'd be happy to look at a revised landscape plan. We're we're required to put in a certain amount of trees.
Yes.
Per foot and and shrubbery. And the trees that we have specked in there from our landscape architect are trees that can grow to twenty-five or thirty feet. But if if we can amend the trees or the placement, we're happy to work with all of the owners nearby and look at the placement. It it really, that part of the landscaping is, we're only doing that because it's a requirement. You know, where where we care about it is out on our frontage, but this is the back of the site, and so we'll be, you know, we'll cooperate in any way we need to with the owners and that. And then as far as the blow-off valves, we were made aware of that, and unfortunately, Clarkdale was closed today. I was gonna try to find out exactly what that is, but it's all in our setback and our our landscape setback, so we can accommodate an easement or, you know, that's not gonna be a, it doesn't affect our development at all, so we can work with that.
All right. Uh, thank you very much. Um, I'm sure the city staff will work with you about the landscaping.
Okay.
All right, I gotta nod. We're good. Okay. Uh, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak regarding this project? All right, no one is coming forward, so I am going to close the floor to the public. Uh, we are going to um now go through and give each commissioner a chance to share their opinion about this project, uh, beginning with Commissioner Nelson.
Thank you. Uh, the project to me makes a lot of sense in that area. Like I said, I'm kind of into the RV world a little bit, and there is a big demand for RV parking in the in the valley. I just don't wanna say the city within the valley. Um, the the renderings, I'm I'm good, I'm good with the colors. I learned something tonight about the usually a a development like this has a white roof for for coolness, reflectivity, blah, blah. But since you mentioned the airport, that makes sense. I'm not a flyer, but I've been in planes, and that sure makes sense. Um, I think the landscaping component can be addressed without much issue. Uh, thank you for coming in and let us know about your concerns on the borders, on the periphery. I think we can work with that. Um, the comment of uh gravel or.
Pervious paving.
Something that can percolate makes a lot of sense, too, and if those items are addressed, which I'm sure they will, um, I think it's gonna be a good development, and I have no issue with it whatsoever.
Excellent. Commissioner Stevens?
Um, I'm excited for this project. I think echoing all of Commissioner Nelson's comments, we really need that. I know a lot of the RV parks here, um, instead of those coming to stay, they're kind of used for storage sometimes, which then makes it hard for those trying to um get a spot. And then the colors, I think, are not an eyesore, so that's, I'm excited about that.
Commissioner Glasskett?
Yeah, I concur with the other commissioners as well as I do believe the gravel is a good idea for the water um flow. And I want to thank the residents for coming and hearing a nice thing about the view as opposed to it blocking your view, so thank you for sharing that.
Uh, Commissioner Kling?
Thank you. I would agree with the others. Um, I think there's a much needed, um, this is much needed around here, and again, thank you to the neighbors. Um, it's great to hear that we have approval on that, because we can appreciate the project all we want, but we're not the one that has to live next to it. So we appreciate you coming, and I think it's with ADOT's approval, we'll, so thanks.
Uh, and Vice Chairman Garrison?
Um, thank you. I I I appreciate the the residents coming and talking about it. Um, it's it it is nice to hear somebody say something great about a project going in next to them instead of what we typically hear. Um, this is very much needed in this community and throughout the Verde Valley. As been stated, we we're getting a lot of requests for housing developments, but um rarely do they allow enough parking for the cars that live in that house, let alone the RVs and all this stuff that you bring with you when you move from one place to another. So you're gonna be very busy and very full very quickly, I believe, and so that's great. Um, I love the commercial aspect to the front building. Um, there's a few of those in town, and they tend to be full all the time, so that's gonna be a great opportunity for some people trying to start up a business or have a business, and they don't need a full space. Um, I'm gonna stick with my earlier comments about the necess- the necessity of a ingress egress off of ADOT, though. Um, I think this project would be too much uh to be placing on Alamos or Cachina, whatever you call that road, uh, that comes into the site, especially with the entrance that comes in off of Black Hills. That entrance is not RV friendly. Um, and then all you're gonna do is exacerbate this with with your traffic here, and I think you'll have quite a bit of traffic. And and as you said, it it's gonna do nothing but pay dividends in the future when you go to develop those commercial parcels out front. So I think you'll have to stick with it and and get ADOT to buy off on that. And and working with another developer right now, I think they're a year and a half out on getting approval from ADOT. So the sooner you get going with them, the better you off you're gonna be, 'cause I think we're giving you two years. So um, anyway, that's it. I I think this is a perfect uh project for this site. Um, a few others have come before us since I've been on this board, uh, talking about projects that they'd like to do, and they tended to meet with uh a lot of problems, uh, mostly from being under the flight path and having living under that flight path, as well as the impacts that were gonna be on the neighbors. Uh, this one will be a very quiet neighbor. Um, it'll be a great use of the space. Uh, as I said, you know, you're gonna be taking the grade down. That's gonna be helpful to keeping all the view shed all the way around and keeping this site very friendly. And and I think it's gonna be a great use, and I wish you a lot of luck getting it built and getting it full.
All right. I'll go ahead and finish this out. I feel like a lot of things have been said. I agree with most of them, pretty much all of them. Uh, I will, I would like you to look into um ways to get groundwater slowly through the paving, however you achieve that. Uh, we won't write that in. I do think that we should keep stipulation number four, not necessarily because I would deny this project without ADOT approval, but because the site plan will change significantly enough, I believe, if you don't get that approval, that I would like to see it come back to the commission so we can take another look. Um, but besides that, I think that this is a good use of the space. I appreciate seeing our local citizens come in and say that they feel like you would be a good neighbor, and I think that this um is worth uh taking to a vote, and I I think nice things are going to happen for you in a few minutes here. All right. Um, and with that, um, I think we're ready to entertain a motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
Uh, great. I'm just looking over one more thing. Um, I move to approve DR twenty-two dash zero-one-three for development of a storage facility subject to the following stipulations. The one, the project shall be developed in conformance with the development plans as submitted to the Plan Zoning Commission at the January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Number two, and that would actually be the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Ooh, yeah.
The project shall conform to code review board comments dated April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and November first, twenty-twenty-two. Number three, dedicated right-of-way shall be granted to the City of Cottonwood for the northern extension of North Alamos Drive and, if applicable, for the access road from Alamos Drive to SR eighty-nine A. Uh, number four, if ADOT does not grant approval for the access road from Al- North Alamos, Alamos Drive to State Route eighty-nine A, then a revised code review and design review submittal shall be required. Number five, parking requirements shall meet the provisions of Section four-oh-six of the zoning ordinance. If a parking reduction waiver is not granted, then a revised code review and design review submittal shall be required. Number six, any exterior lighting shall meet the provisions of the city zoning ordinance, Section four-zero-eight. Number seven, landscaping shall be installed in accordance with zoning ordinance, Section four-zero-seven point E. Number eight, separate permits are required for any signs. Number nine, all addressing and street names shall be coordinated and approved by the Cottonwood Fire and Medical Department and shall meet all requirements of the twenty-eighteen International Fire Code. Number ten, the building permit application must be submitted within twenty-four months of design review approval. This requirement is not met, then design review approval shall be revoked, and a new code review, design review submittal will be required. Number eleven, a shared parking agreement shall be required for the development prior to the issuance of the building permits. And stipulation twelve, the developer shall coordinate with the Town of Clarkdale for any utility easements that may be required. And from what I heard, number thirteen is the developer shall work with staff to coordinate landscaping along the joint areas with local housing.
Very good. Do I have a second? One second. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nelson?
Approved.
Commissioner Stevens?
Approved.
Commissioner Glasskett?
Approve.
Commissioner Kling?
Approved.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Aye.
Chairwoman Mastin?
Approved. Unanimously carried. Congratulations. Thank you for coming in this evening. The next agenda item is zoning ordinance twenty-three dash zero-zero-one, amendment to the City of Cottonwood zoning ordinance, Sections two-oh-three, definitions, oh wow, there's a lot, four-oh-two, location and boundaries of districts, four-oh-four, general provisions, four-eighteen, uh, commercial one, light commercial zone, and four-nineteen, commercial two, heavy commercial. Forgot how long that title was, Tina. I should've just let you do it.
Thank you, Chairwoman Commission, Tina Hayden for Community Development. I actually have it broken down into four different topics for these uh proposals, the text amendment proposals here. The first one is going to encompass Article two, Section two-oh-one, definitions, Section four-eighteen, commercial, light commercial, and Section four-nineteen, heavy commercial. Uh, this is, we are working to incorporate a drive-in slash drive-through element. Currently, the definition in Section two-oh-one uh only encompasses uh drive-in restaurants. There are no provisions for drive-throughs for any businesses, not banks, not pharmacies, and not fast food restaurants. Uh, in C-one and C-two, we have provisions for those drive-ins. Uh, in C-one, it is a by conditional use permit only for the drive-in restaurant, and in C-two, the drive-in restaurant is a permitted use. We are looking to add the drive-in, drive-through element for a permitted building in that zone, uh, as a conditional use permit for Section four-eighteen and as by permit or by right for Section four-nineteen. The definition is read as "an element of an establishment which allows for providing goods or services to patrons within motor vehicles." The regulations for both sections are designed so that the exterior speakers are located and designed to minimize noise levels, and the Community Development Director may require additional screening to mitigate sound and headlight glare. The second topic is Article four, Section four-zero-two, zoning districts. This is uh zoning, adoption of zoning for newly annexed areas. Uh, and it is adopting per Arizona state law that no greater uses, or zoning districts are not adopted, uh, so that no greater than the uses and densities that were permitted in the county are now to be adopted for um for the newly annexed area. The third topic is Section four-oh-four-H, general provisions for height regulations. This will establish criteria for towers that will be located closer to lot lines than the height of the tower. Currently, uh, it states in our zoning ordinance that a tower should be built and located so that if its reclining length, um, so that if it were to fall, its entire reclining length would stay within the property. This creates a dilemma for property owners who have a tower that is engineered so that it won't have such a large fall radius. It might have a minimal fall radius and can be situated closer to the property line. Uh, one, we have create, uh, recommending a provision here that if they submit uh structural engineering documents, the city engineer and the building official can review them and approve the location of the structure if it's to be closer to the lot line than its height. The criteria for these, this document submittal is that all documents shall be stamped with an Arizona Registered Engineer seal, that calculations are based on local design criteria, and there is a site site plan showing approximate area of collapse if the structure were to fall. And the last item is for Section four-zero-four-O, general provisions for animals and pets. We are expanding the show animal permitting to all residential zones, and we are clarifying criteria for show animal permitting. This table here shows what types of animals are permitted in in this area, in what zoning district they are permitted, and how many are permitted per project or per twenty thousand square feet. And that is the end of my presentation. I am ready for any questions that you guys may have.
I apologize, Tina. I didn't notice this earlier, but is the city classifying rabbits as not like domestic pets?
This is just for the show animal permitting. We are, uh, actually, yes, rabbits are can, could be considered a show animal project. I believe uh in in the same Section four-zero-four for animals and pets, there is, per municipal code, a restriction of three household pets per household.
And a rabbit would still fall into the household pet?
That's correct.
As well?
If you wanted to have additional household or additional rabbits for a show animal, you would have, a permit would be required.
Okay. Just curious. I I did rabbits in four-H, actually. Sorry. Slight tangent.
Could, could you go back to two, number two, please?
The second item for the zoning districts?
Yeah, so I thought that was the whole reason we came up with the AR-seventy classification of zoning was to take the place of of the county zoning.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, AR-seventy or the newer AR-eighty-seven?
I thought it was AR-seventy. What, we, we approved for a zoning designation to go to the council for approval because it wasn't in our code, and I thought that was AR-seventy. It was to take place of the counties.
AR-seventy has been in place for a number of years. We newly created AR-eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Uh, for a recent annexation, the last couple of years. That's the newest one, and that is where we did replace county zoning with that. Um, but AR-eighty-seven has been in place since the early two thousands, or AR-seventy has been in place since the early two thousands.
So what exactly is this doing, then? Is this just formalizing the idea that we will take county zoning and move it straight to to AR-eighty-seven?
So, no, there's not, there's not a designated zoning based on on this right here. State law does require that we apply zoning that is no more intense than what the county has. So for that recent annexation that I mentioned, we had to create a new zoning district. If we ever have to do that, that comes to this commission for recommendation to city council. Basically, what this does, uh, right now, our zoning ordinance requires us to bring that, what that zone would be to the commission to make a recommendation to council. We're getting rid of that step because there's only so many options that we can use. Um, if we have to, let's say, for example, match R-one, then we, as staff, take that directly to council instead of having to come to the commission first and then go to council, because there's no other option.
It just cleans it up.
Correct.
It takes and puts that to use. So.
Yeah.
This was a step that was expected out of the outcome of the new designation of that zoning.
Right.
of that zoning.
Right.
So, that's perfect. I just, I want to make sure this was making things easier for staff, not harder.
Yes. No, it's absolutely making it easier.
Perfect. And then, the first two, we had a conversation one time about a drive-through. I think it was when we were looking at the zoning for land in the Old Town area, and we had a conversation about land that was residential, commercial, and it was stated, if I remember right, during that conversation, that you couldn't put in a drive-through if there was a restaurant to go in a commercial residential space because of the impact to the neighbors. Does this new rule basically allow that to be looked at as part of the design of a project?
For the commercial, C1 and C2 zones, not for the-
Not for commercial residential.
Correct.
So, I think what you'd be looking at as an example would be like the Dairy Queen. That would be like a C1 commercial drive-through on Main, as an example.
Correct. Mr. Vice Chair, it does prohibit the drive-through and drive-in in the commercial residential zone that you're talking about. It's in place currently in the zoning ordinance. This does nothing to that. This is just the C1 and C2 zones, which are not, they exist down here in Old Town. The C1 does exist in Old Town, but the CR zone is kind of, when you go around a corner right back up here, past Willard, that's where that exists, where historically it was residential, and they kind of morphed into some commercial, very light commercial.
Yeah, and I guess why I'm asking is I, I'm thinking as an example of the bike shop down here on Fifth, is if somebody was, the bike shop was to move out, somebody was to move in there with a cafe/coffee house and put in a window, that would not be allowed because that's CR, even though if they went up the street a block or two, they would, because it would be commercial there.
And we do have a drive-through that's about a block or two from there.
Correct. If it's in the CR zone, it is still prohibited.
Is there any expectation to be revisiting CR for the driveway, drive-through? So, it's not, it's not a given, but it's also not automatically denied, because I think there would be instances where it would be applicable?
We could always look into making that change as a conditional use. It's not something that we've had a lot of inquiries on, so that's why we're addressing it just with C1 and C2, but we could always go back and look at doing that, perhaps as conditional use in the CR zone.
It just seems, and I'm sorry to go sideways, it just seems that the more this, especially this strip right here of Main Street develops, the more, we're either going to get rentals, you know, Airbnb, or we're going to get commercial. And I would prefer to see more commercial on that strip, because we, you know, we want to feed our downtown, and so I think that kind of becomes an impediment to some of the maybe ideas that people would bring forward on uses for some of those properties if it was just automatically denied versus something that would be able to be looked at as part of a design review. So, that's why I'm asking, and I wasn't thinking about the CR being its own zoning when I was looking at this. I was considering it falling under the C1, but I see now it doesn't, so thank you very much for the explanation.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Can you go to three, please? Item A, all submitted documents shall be stamped with an Arizona-registered engineer seal. There are different types of engineers within the state. I think you might want to have a discussion with the city engineer and/or building department on what type of engineer's seal you're looking for here. An electrical engineer probably wouldn't help you in this particular situation, a civil or structural probably would, so I may be just, you know, making a mountain out of a molehill, but you might want to look at that. And then go to four, please?
Okay.
Currently, I'm assuming that all residential zones do not have, are not permitted for show animals? Is that the idea of making this change?
Correct.
What's driving the change?
Egg crisis.
I'm sorry. Chickens have an exception.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Nelson, every year we get various inquiries on what's allowed show animals. This is extremely outdated compared to neighboring jurisdictions on what's allowed. It is something that is needed around here, putting in place a little bit more clarification on what's allowed, what's not allowed, where it's allowed, because we do get, every year, like I said, we get complaints from neighbors and this and that on people who do have show animals, so this allows us to say what's allowed. Unfortunately, sometimes people will also call up, say, hey, my kid wants to do this animal, can we do it? Unfortunately, you can't. It is definitely something we need to update.
Okay. I was wondering if there's just been, where the complaint basis has been, is coming from. I have, I'm in a residential area, I have chickens in my backyard, not my yard, but my neighbor's backyard, and I'm okay with it, but if there is a bull or a steer making noise and causing a problem, I might, I might have a problem with that. That's why I was just wondering where this is coming from.
Yeah, again, it's to clarify it, and as you can see, the AR agricultural residential zones are where the livestock animals would be, like the steers and the swine and horses, those kind of animals, which are already allowed in AR zones, based on certain property sizes, so this just kind of clarifies that for them.
And then the residents would have to show that they have a permit for that particular-
Correct.
If requested.
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I noticed somewhere as well on there that it said the planning and zoning inspector would go out and potentially be able to remove the animals. Who would that be?
That would be our code enforcement, animal enforcement.
That's the planning and zoning inspector.
That is something that we will actually be coming to you eventually to clarify and establish the definitions for different job roles.
My initial feel on this was that it was good, because I think it adds clarity, and I tend to be in favor of keeping these kind of animals. I think FFA and 4H are great experiences, and a lot of even homes and residential areas in this particular city, I mean, there's large lots, so you, it's not that big a deal to have three rabbits, say, on your property, properly permitted, of course, and it's a good experience for people, and it doesn't have to annoy neighbors if it's done thoughtfully. So, I think that this is good. I think that it gives clarity for residents, and it allows city staff to handle any issues that arise more directly, because you can point to regulation instead of just on the fly.
And please highlight roosters are prohibited.
Commissioner Glasgow, actually, that is a separate chicken permit, and it is listed that roosters are prohibited, so.
I like them.
I do, but you get a big piece of property.
Any further comments about these proposed zoning ordinance changes? All right. Well, if that's the case, and is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak to these zoning ordinance changes? It's unusual, but I thought I'd check. All right. Thank you very much, Tina. I don't think we have any further questions from you. Any further comments about this, Commissioners? All right. With that, I would like to entertain a motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
Is there something to be, a motion?
I think so. Isn't there? Isn't there a motion to approve these changes?
I don't see one.
Nope. Let me see. Oh, no, there isn't. Missing from my PDF.
I didn't go down, I went up, I'm sorry. Men's Sections 201, 402, 404, 418, and 419 regarding definitions for drive-through elements, zoning for annexed land, tower height and structure regulations, show animal permitting, and regulations for drive-through elements. I move to recommend approval to the city council, the proposed amendment to Sections 201, 402, 404, 418, 419 regarding definitions for drive-through elements, zoning for annexed land, tower height and structure regulations, show animal permitting, and regulations for drive-through bounds.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nelson?
Approved.
Commissioner Stevens?
Approved.
Commissioner Glasgow?
Approved.
Commissioner Kling?
Approved.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Approve.
And Chairwoman Mastin?
Approved. Unanimously carried. Congratulations, Tina. All right. We do not have any discussion items on the agenda tonight. Were there any suggested topics for future meetings? Yes?
I got, I got one. Months ago, I had asked, you know, we had approved a lot of projects, and you did an update to the commission on the different projects that have been approved and what their status was. Unfortunately, I was not at that meeting, because I was out of state at the time. Is there any way that can become like just an attached report to the, to the, to the meeting agenda, not as something that has to be reported to us, but just something that is kind of a running tally of where we're at with those things? Does that make sense? Is that something you guys already keep that you would be able to share versus having to create a whole new document, or?
I think we can come up with something, yeah.
Okay. Kind of, what I'm interested in, just the time lapse, basically, of, you know, what was approved and how much longer they have to actually get their work done to make it go, or whether it's going to fall off and be considered null and void at that point. So, it would just help me, I guess, with some of these discussions we have, if I knew kind of where we're at with some of the prior projects, so.
Yeah, we can, we can come up with something. Give us a little bit more time to get fully staffed and some people trained up, and then that's something we can start including.
I like that idea as well.
Excellent. All right. Any further suggested topics? I don't hear anything, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Adjourned.